It's six o'clock and I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the Planted Zone Commission. Uh, this is a special meeting and a workshop and unfortunately we didn't have a forum last Thursday to conduct business. So we will be handling all the items that we did not get to on Thursday first and then we will go into our workshop. Okay. First item that we have is your call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Present.
Abraham Lugo.
Present.
Johnny Arvaz. Guillermo Uvalde.
Present.
George Beckelhammer.
Present.
Carlos Flores. Zetez. For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have more.
Thank you. I gotta do like Johnny Arvaz and Carlos Flores advise this Thursday that they will be out of town. Uh, so if we can have motion to excuse them.
Motion to excuse.
Motion.
Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, next item is a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like, please stand up. Flags that we do. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, the next item that we have is the consideration of the minutes.
I don't believe we have the minutes.
I don't think minutes in the meeting is sixteen. Alright.
Yeah, you're not, you're not available.
Okay.
We won't have the table available.
Alright. Do we have any citizens comments for the meeting?
No, we do not.
Alright, first item that we have is review and reconsideration of the Vela Vista master plan. The intent is residential. The purpose of this revision is to reconfigure phases and realign streets.
Mr. Chairman, we don't, we, we, we don't need to take any action of the minutes like postponed for the next meeting or anything like that.
We don't have any.
Not necessary.
Do we have any motions tabled in there?
You could.
Okay, if you want, let's do it. Do it. Motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes have been tabled. Alright, uh, first item that we have is the, the, uh, engineer of record Daniel Gomez. Uh, the proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from the planning department, the engineering department, water utilities, traffic safety, and a notice to developer from planning. Mr. Gomez.
Uh, thank you, Daniel Gomez, and we concur with the comments.
We concur with the comments. Alright. Does anybody have any questions in commission for the engineer of this master plan? Reconsideration.
No questions.
Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move that we, do we close discussion on these? This is move to close discussion.
This is not a public hearing.
Okay, I move that we approve, uh, item six A.
Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Motion carries. Next item that we have is, uh, preliminary consideration of Salitolingo Autozone Plan. The intent is commercial. This is a two point six one acre tract located east of Highway three south and north of Salitolingo Boulevard. The zoning for this two lot development is B three. The proposed action, uh, is approved subject to the following comments from the planning department, from water utilities, from traffic safety, and a notice to developer from planning, uh, count on engineering. Commission have any questions?
Well, yeah, I don't know if the proposed actions should be, why is, uh, this stuff not supported? Can we go, can we, uh, better support this, uh?
Proposed action.
Cause they didn't write it.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is, uh, approval.
Yeah.
Approval subject to.
There's, there's, most of them are missing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're just gonna take and make an assumption that you're bringing it forth and recommending approval.
That is correct.
Okay, well, we just wanna clarify, uh, that way it's all taped that it is an approval that you're recommending subject to the following comments.
That is correct.
That are listed here. Alright. Uh, what are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Preliminary consideration of the flat of Concord Hills Park subdivision. The intent is multifamily residential. This is a three point seven four acre tract located east of Concord Hills Boulevard and south of Gage Avenue. The zoning for this ten lot development is B one and R one A. Tract is located in District Two. Proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from the planning, from water utilities, and a notice to developer from planning. Engineer of record is trade engineering.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Edward Garcia with trade engineering. I'm here on behalf of developer. Uh, we have reviewed the comments and we do concur with them. I just wanna say that, uh, this, this particular project, uh, actually fits the original master plan of that area. When we masterplanned it back in the nineties, we had, uh, some topographic issues in this property. And so the original developer, when we were engineering that side, we, we agreed that we would preserve this land for multifamily use. And finally, twenty-three years later, we have someone that's willing to do it. The good news is that we have a major collector to the west and a minor collector to the north, which would provide adequate access for multifamily use. All the utilities and drainage improvements were masterplanned for this type of application as well. And so, uh, we're, we're getting ready to start the development of a grading plan. This will be the biggest challenge we'll be facing on this property. Other than that, I think, uh, we already have some, uh, plans for working out the drainage aspect to protect the residential development to the south. And, uh, other than that, I think we're, oh, we also will, we'll be submitting a, uh, zone change application for a portion of the land that is currently zoned R one A.
You're looking to go to what for more?
Uh, well, right now, we have a B one in front.
Yeah.
Back then, we were thinking about doing commercial. That's not gonna happen. So, we will work with the planning department to kind of identify an appropriate zone to, to complement existing zones around the area.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia, the commission? If not, what are the wishes of the commission? We have a motion, we have a second. Second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item that we have, preliminary consideration of the flat of Vela Vista subdivision unit four. The intent is residential. This is a five point seven acre tract located north of the state highway three fifty-nine, east of Judy Gutierrez Parkway. The zoning for this thirty four lot development is R one A. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from the planning, from water utilities, and a notice to developer. Mr. Gomez, Daniel Gomez, engineer of record.
I'm Daniel Gomez, and we concur with the comments.
Okay. Any questions for the engineer, the commission? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve item seven C.
We have a motion, we have a second and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the preliminary consideration of the replant. A lot ten, block two, Monaco subdivision, face two and two thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet. Out of portion twenty-two into lot ten A, block two, Monaco subdivision, face two. The intent is residential. Purpose of this replant is to incorporate two thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet and made by the city of Laredo onto existing lot. The proposed action is subject, is approved subject to the following comments from the planning director, I mean, from planning, from, uh, water utilities, and a notice to developer for planning. I guess the only correction that I would add to this is obviously, planning, uh, item number three, but we do have it revised, uh, format here that corrects. We're good. We're good. Okay. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve item.
We have a motion, second and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the preliminary consideration of the flat of Embacadero subdivision. H eight A, the intent is industrial, commercial. The purpose of this replant is to incorporate three point zero zero four one acres into existing lot. Proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from the planning department, water utilities, and a notice to developer for planning.
Are we on seventy?
Seventy. Mr. Camacho.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, the commissioners. Uh, we, we concur with the, with the comments except for, uh, the first comment on the planning department. We asked the, the commission to see if we could revise the comment to, to read, to revise, uh, the plan to read. Replay about two, uh, staff is recommending to recent, to revise and resubmit. I've spoken with staff and they're okay with, with the revision if, if the commission is okay with that. So, I, I'm asking for, to revise the, the comments to, to read, revise the plan accordingly. And we've already made the changes, it's, it's just, don't worry.
Okay, so it's revise instead of resubmit?
Yes, sir.
The planning director, you okay with that?
Absolutely, I am.
Any questions for?
Well, just the, the technicality, but if you revise it, you have to resubmit. But here we're talking about a process that, they start from the beginning, is that what resubmit is?
Right, yeah, well, well, we've talked about it, we, we wouldn't want them to actually start the process over. And I, and we'll, and we're honoring the reason, so, that's okay.
Alright, that's it. Okay, so you're all good? Any questions for Mr. Camacho? What are the wishes of the commission?
That we approve with the revision of saying revise on planning's suggestion, uh, number one and approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item, preliminary consideration of the flat of D and J Alexander, phase fifteen. Alexander Crossing Plaza, lot four, block two. The intent is commercial. This is a two point zero seven acre tract located east of Borde Avenue and north of University Boulevard. The zoning for this one lot development is B one and B three. Proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from the planning department, uh, water utilities, and a notice to developer for planning. Premier?
We concur with the comments.
Okay. Any questions? The commission? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve item eighty.
Second. Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item that we have is the preliminary reconsideration of the flat of Diaz, the San Luis Dean subdivision, unit seven. The intent is residential. This is a fifteen point six six four three acre tract located south of International Bridge Four and west of FM fourteen seventy-two. The zoning for this is hundred and two lot subdivision is R one A. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning, from, uh, water utilities, from traffic safety, and a notice to developer for planning.
We concur with the comments.
Alright, anybody have any questions? Please come up.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just, I'm not familiar with, um, is there, there we go. You know, since all that area is such a hot topic of M one, R one, bloody heads, I'm just curious about, none of this poses a problem in the near future?
No, it should not. It's south, the, the, the hotspots are, um, the other side of the north, that's on south.
Oh, I see, and here's the Rio Grande.
That is correct, yes, thank you.
The, the plus of the bridge or residence is that that's, that's okay.
Well, that, many years ago, the mandate was to do residential towards Riverside. Right. Keep the industrial on the other side of fourteen seventy-two, but it got hotspots many years ago.
It's in Bridge One.
No?
It's in Bridge One.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is preliminary reconsideration of the flat of Embacadero subdivision, face ten. The intent is commercial. This is a twenty-one point eight six seven one acre tract. It's located west of Interstate thirty-five and north of Route twenty. The zoning for this three lot subdivision is M one. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning, from water utilities, and a notice to.
We concur with the comments.
Alright, any questions for Camacho, commission?
Can we see that, that locator map board? All of that's M one, appears. Yeah, it's all surrounded. No more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, what are the wishes of the commission? Motion to approve. Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next items that we have, items nine eight through, uh, nine F. We have a motion to, a motion to hear all items from nine A to nine two.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion to approve an item nine A through nine F.
Second.
And second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This includes the regular agenda of Thursday.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, adjourn the, ninety-eight. As long as you bring out the schedule.
We have to adjourn.
The orders that you posted. So, the next item that we have is a workshop. Discussion and possible action regarding the revision of the City of Reguland Development Code, chapter twenty-four, article four and five, for the purpose of amended dimensional standard setback requirements in any other material incidental thereto. Alright. Who is gonna start the presentation or where are we?
If, if anything, we can take the center seat now.
Okay.
Good evening, members, the chairman and members of the commission, Victor Inaudis, acting building director. Um, just, um, following up from the last meeting, there was, there was different requests. Um, one of them was to invite, um, Abel City. Uh, the other one asked how to deal with discussion with legal on the approach, um, going to, to council. And then we did have, um, a motion from council to invite the TRB forward to discussion. And so when it comes for the first item, just to try to do some status, we did make contact with Abel City. Unfortunately, um, they were not able to attend for this week. If anything, if they potentially could maybe meet, um, next week, um, with, or, or, or will coordinate that, but they weren't available for this week. Um, so we, we, we don't have them available for, for that. Mr.?
Victor?
Yes?
But I'm familiar with the scope of work that they've submitted. I can speak to what they've, what they're proposing. In addition, I've also done the same work that's being proposed. And I'll be heavily involved in the process of revising our, our code and zoning ordinances. So, I can speak to that sufficiently today to answer the question that you all have.
Okay, um, I think some of the questions that the commission members have, I don't know specifically who, I think it was Joey or Carlos. They were wanting to know how the amendment of the Land Development Code and this workshop that we're having tonight, how it wouldn't tie in together if we just did revisions to the Land Development Code.
Well, essentially, what, what is being proposed and what was proposed with the Vela Laredo plan was to not just amend, but to revise the existing code, in effect, to replace it.
Sure.
Well, a lot of complaints, and I'm sure you're aware of, being in Laredo for many years and then also as commissioners, you see that sometimes the code is confusing, sometimes it's contradictory, that sometimes it's not clear. And there are many places where it needs to be revised. So that's one part of it. The other part of it is, the public, through a lot of public input, said that they, they want to see a Laredo that not only allows for development, traditional suburban style development, like's happening, like a lot of what you all proved tonight, but also to encourage denser development where people want to pursue that in our inner city. And so, the question of setbacks is something that will be looked at, will be examined, will be analyzed. And that will take a process. It's not something you just wanna blanket change. It's something you definitely wanna measure the impact that it's gonna have on the city. And you wanna make sure you get input. It's one thing to ask the residents of Laredo, hey, do you want more walkable urban Laredo? Oh, yeah, sure. It's another thing to say, what if your neighbor's setback moved from twenty to five feet? How would that impact you? Are you okay with that? And that's something that we haven't done, we haven't gotten into specifics of what that would mean to add density in our inner city where we have established neighborhoods. So that process will occur. There will be public input through this process where we can talk with not just a few, but many of the residents, about the specifics of things we're proposing to change. And then we will look at the scale of, of what we're proposing and, and we'll get input from commission and from council on what they feel comfortable with. Before then, we proceed with, uh, a proposed change that you would then vote on for a recommendation to council and then ultimately they would vote on.
Okay. Well, I mean, that, that sort of makes a lot of sense to me, what you're saying to me. I know that, uh, what was being proposed, I'm sure you're aware of it.
I am.
Was a, a five percent back situation. I think a lot of the commission sort of was looking at something like what you're talking about. You know, let's take a look at this thing. Let's find out what the impacts would be. And we, we raised a lot of questions at our workshop last week as opposed to, when you design a subdivision, every engineer calculates runoff, calculates fixtures for water and sewer. And those are questions that when you, you know, eliminate permeable surfaces, you add runoff. So now you've got issues potentially flooding, upgrades of water and sewer. Those are the kind of questions the commission asked about last week that obviously we didn't have answers. Said somebody, we need to take a look at some of these items before we, you know, just do a blanket. And, and I know that's, that was some of the discussion that we had, uh, I know, do you, do you just?
Yes, it, it's, uh, it's very interesting with, uh, what you mentioned and that. That's exactly what, uh, what we're looking for. We, we need, uh, to look at a study with a public input. So, we do not make a rec, a recommendation that will actually, will create a hardship for the coming, uh, for our successors and for, for the people that are gonna be here on the, I will not make a, a, I will not vote with something that I don't have all the information that might affect one of the, uh, of the subdivisions for the city as a whole. So, I think that it's, it's better for us to wait until they do the study. And then they bring it to us with all the recommendations and then we can do what is, what is right for the community. None of us here are experts, so we need to become experts, Mr. Chairman, by the information that it can be better by, by this version right here.
Well, by Abel City is also, it's, it's very concerned.
That is correct. And, and that, that doesn't be the issue all the time that we don't, we even know what, you don't have the answers. I personally don't have the answer. I can tell you how the, the runoff is gonna, is gonna go, or it might affect, uh, if we have a, a storm. I don't know if, uh, the neighbor is gonna, how he's gonna feel, whether he's gonna have somebody, uh, having carnassado or the head right, right four or five feet from, uh, from the, uh, from the back door. So, uh, I feel that, uh, that one of the best things that we should do is wait until we have all the answers before. I mean, this is something that, that has been going on. If we're gonna implement the change, let's go ahead and implement the change based on facts, on studies, on resolutions. Not something that we just may not.
Mr. Chairman, may I share a little more?
Yes, of course.
We are contracting with consultants on this, not because we don't have the expertise, but we, we need the additional man hours to complete it in timely fashion. The experts of Laredo's city code is here in this room. It's Fernando, it's Rafael. Nobody knows the city code better than our planners that we have here already. And if we're going to revise the city code, we're gonna rely heavily on the expertise of our planners. Now, to get it done in a timely fashion, we're gonna need some extra hands. So that's why we're going to Abel City, not because they have expertise that we don't, because they have more hands that we need. So I want you to feel confident that we have that expertise. And I've, I've done this in other cities and I've worked on it and bring that experience here. So we're gonna be very much involved with this process. Along the way, we're gonna give you recommendations. Now, the first recommendation that I'll give you tonight is that if, if you were to propose an action, that, I'm not sure that you're doing that, this is just a workshop. But if you were to propose one, the staff recommendation would that there, that there be a negative recommendation to pursue any changes to the setbacks right now, that would be, that would be premature and we need more time. So that would be our recommendation to you as, as the commission, of course, that's just a recommendation. You can decide yourself what you like.
Mr. Kirby, or, or, Mr. Chairman, so planning is now responsible for this? Cause it was coming up through TRB to building and planning was passed through. I'm just, I just don't understand how that works. I felt that we do the P and C also, just to share with you.
Well, with an interim director, uh, things maybe were a little tenuous in the, in the planning department, but, um, we've come together as a team, we have a little more clear direction on, on what we're doing. I think you'll find with the planning commission that we will, there'll be a change that we will be giving recommendations, either positive or negative, on every item. And very rarely will we ever be neutral in our recommendations. We're gonna do that to refine you, um, cause sometimes it can be unclear, what, what's the way forward that we should proceed. And I know the, the planning department's maybe been a little hands off and let you figure that out for yourself. But we're gonna be giving you more information, we're gonna be giving you recommendations, and we're also gonna be giving you training along the way. We're gonna have additional workshops where all that we're doing is taking time for those that, that are available to teach you some of these things rudimentary. And one of those things that, when we're talking about setbacks, we'd like to explain is, why do we have setbacks? Why are they different in the downtown versus suburban areas? What are other cities doing? What are the positives and negatives of increasing or decreasing? So that, that's training that we're gonna do because like you said, you're new and you probably are an expert in your field. This may not be something that you deal with regularly. But we wanna give you as much information, help you become an expert in plans so that you can execute your office successfully.
I appreciate that. I'd much want to reemphasize though that, and I appreciate, and, um, I'm impressed by what you're saying. Though you didn't really cover on your opening statement, which is fine, it, Mr., uh, our chairman's, uh, comments, which we all share about the, uh, the flash flood type runoff that we get and the way that the MS four systems already developed and utilities. So, I wouldn't even ask the public their opinion until you, you, you confirm if it's safe or not. Because that's what happens here. So you have developed areas for certain capacities and you had more impermeable surface and nobody thinks about it and then the city takes the blame and there's pulling of hair and gnashing of teeth and we've been through this before. So, though I'm not necessarily an expert here, I was in environmental for seven years and of course I pay attention to that for our community. But that's what we're real concerned about, that it's being presented as blanket change. And there's, uh, it can't be done. And so you said that's right, it can't be done, we all concur, it can't be done with the information that we have. But most importantly is that stuff about can the city system handle the, the aftermath of doing something like that? Okay?
Yeah, we, I don't think you want, if you want to get into details right now, talking about setbacks, some of the impacts, I'm fine with having that discussion. I, it doesn't sound like you want to, but if you do, you can, and you're exactly right. There will be significant impacts over time if we increase the impervious surface area in certain areas where it was not built to maintain the type of runoff that will occur. So, definitely.
And I think, and I think also, one of the, the, the concerns that I think the whole commission shared was the extreme of going from twenty to five and not exploring like the twenty to ten. And, and maybe we can also get, uh, the impact on that. And, you know, maybe we're not sustainable for a five, but maybe we could do a ten and see what would be the best interest of the city itself and see how that might be also considered maybe.
Yes, the, if I may, the recommendation from us would be, not that whether it's good or bad or how much, that's not, but what we're speaking to is the process. We want to give you information first.
Right.
Get you that information and also get that information to the public. Because you're right, asking for public input without first informing the public is not helpful at all. So we wanna do that analysis, get that information there for this and other aspects of change in the code. And then when we have that, we can have informed responses from the commission, the council, and the public. And then y'all will be able to make a better decision.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, the information that is, that is gonna be, well, to us, is gonna be.
The, uh, the information that is, is gonna be brought to us is gonna be based on other cities, not Laredo. Cause we don't have anything in Laredo. I also believe that we could implement a pilot plan. Something that, uh, that we can work for one or two years in a certain area of Laredo. And that will serve also as, uh, as an example, right, or, or as a, um, as an input for your study. Because then you're gonna have something that you're gonna be able to go back and actually look the way it impacted the area. Suppose that we get, uh, district two, I think district two is the one that we can ask you for this type of setbacks. If, uh, if we decide to go, uh, if the commission decides to go five or ten feet as a setback for, uh, for one or two years, then we can actually look at the impact firsthand. Cause otherwise, how can you bring something up? I mean, where are you gonna get the information? You wouldn't have anything that, that we can actually compare in Laredo. So, I still think that, uh, that five feet is, uh, it's, it's too close, but how do we know? I mean, we don't. We don't have any basics to work on. I think that at a certain time, we need to look in implementing pilot for, for a certain amount of time, maybe a year, maybe two years. And, uh, we have, uh, I was, uh, speaking with Ruiz and, uh, he brought something up. There were some times during the, uh, during the, uh, the development of Laredo where, where we have areas like, uh, like, uh, Azteca. Where we have areas or the setbacks are not even five feet. There might be two, there might be ten, there might be nothing. At least, th- tho- those areas still exist and people is there. So, can we use that? Well, not really, because that's, that's something that I've been there for many, many years, fifty, sixty. I'll be hard here, I'll be hard with you. So, can we implement a new area and develop that area, truly? And, and maybe work with that area and then decide the city will work or not? We don't know. This is something that, that probably we need to bring next time to the commission and then make a recommendation to the city council. Those are only my thoughts. Is that all?
Yeah, I have a question. So thi- this was initiated because, uh, I'm, I'm speaking directly to the staff, uh. So we have people that would like to add on to their homes, right, to, uh, come for another bedroom, maybe is that the main reason that, uh,
Well, I think, uh, the, the biggest, uh, uh,
I'm just trying to summarize.
Kind of touched on the base that, uh, the current, um, uh, council wants people to have, to be able to, to create more building on their, on their properties. So that's how, that's how this whole thing, uh-
Well, you're saying the whole council, so they voted, let's, let people in, the, not to represent?
Yeah, let me just make the, the statement, but then, so ba- basically, this is the situation. You can pretty much do anything in your backyard, pretty much, up to two and a half feet from your neighbor, so long as it's not living area. Uh, so there's a lot of people that wanna add to their backyards that can't for living, you know, for living purposes. So that's one issue. Number one is you can pretty much do anything you want in your backyard. You can go a hundred percent impervious cover. There's a bunch of instances, if you look at the aerials, where people pour concrete in their, in their, in their, in their backyards. So that's, people wanna be able to decide what to do with their backyard and be able to add living area. That's, that's number one. The other iss- the other issue that, uh, that anybody's been in the building department knows is that when you have a twenty foot building setback and the home does not have a garage and the current ordinance is only allow for fifty percent of the, of the, uh, of the setback to put a covered area, people can't really cover their garages. So that's another, or protector cars.
But that one we, we saw, right, we said was okay.
No, you've never-
Yeah, we did, within the last, last week.
We, we said no. But, okay, well, let me, let me just finish my, let me finish my thought. So, and went back to the city. So, what he's talking about is mostly residential areas where the setbacks are there for a reason, right? And like you said, you can educate us a little more on those reasons, where twenty foot, ten foot and five foot. The areas you're talking about in Azteca is more inner city and typically you see a lot more closer, denser vertical cities, right? So the Azteca originally, when Laredo was growing, it was our inner city, yeah. And that's why the setbacks are very tiny and people guys-
Well, there was no requirements. There was no requirements when that was built. I mean, that was where the city started, right? And there was no rules or regulations back then. No rules, whatever. You're talking about two hundred years ago, probably when that thing started.
But we have one though.
But, but, but there's different types of, of, of development for different areas of town, right? And I don't want, so when he's talking about setbacks in residential and then you're talking about downtown, it gets really too general and it's not-
No, but we have Concord Hills. Concord Hills is a very good sample.
And they have setbacks to what? So can you, can you-
It's a big problem.
So I guess can you tell us why the, the, why the twenty foot setbacks and in residential and why the smaller, more denser setbacks in, in inner city?
Yes, one of the, setbacks are there for several reasons. Two of the biggest reasons are, one, well, I'll give you three. One is for easements for utilities, because things have to run in between buildable area where services can be accessed, where ground can be accessed, that's one. Second is privacy. In, in some areas, people wanna be separated because they won't have an expectation of privacy in their backyard and avoiding interaction. And then, uh, there's a third that's kept my mind, but I'll come back to that. You have inner city areas or downtown areas where the setbacks are basically zero. In effect, you can build to the lot line. Now, why is that more acceptable on a downtown and not acceptable on a suburban area? It's more acceptable in downtown typically because the construction, the development that's occurring in downtown is occurring by businesses that have money that are gonna maintain the buildings. You know, that's not always the case, especially here in Laredo, but in an older cities like Laredo. But typically that's the case, is that development's occurring by business who's gonna be able to maintain that, have it safer. They're gonna have fire suppression, they're going to make sure things are done more correctly with- When you get out to a suburban area, you get individuals that are purchasing properties, maybe not maintaining it, maybe not building it to code. One, one problem is no matter how much enforcement you do, you always have building that occurs in suburban areas that's not done to code and there's much more risk of, of issues in, with suburban style development than, than in downtown. And so when you're allowing people, if you were to allow closer setbacks or even zero setbacks in residential areas and get people building next door each other, you have pretty significant, there's a risk of, uh, issues like that. Or I'm sure that our fire marshal representative here can speak to that, that they're, that one of the reasons we have setbacks, especially in residential areas, is so that there's some safety distance between those buildings, especially when it comes to accessing those and not spreading. So there are reasons why there are setbacks and another is privacy. A lot of people purchased in these suburban areas with an expectation that they'd be separated from their neighbor. Now for us to change that without any analysis with just, oh yeah, let's change it now. That can be seen as arbitrary and capricious instead of a process that should be methodical and thought about and looking at different areas and what's acceptable in different areas.
And, and it's your-
He's, but can I speak to your comment?
No, no, you're, you're right.
Really quick, you, you mentioned that, uh, we, we're not sure about the impact, where would we get that maybe a part of there? We have different setbacks in different parts of the city and we very much can look at different areas of the city and see how those setbacks have influenced development and pull from our own experience in Laredo and then look at other stuff, things in cities too. So we have a lot to compare to. And then speaking to your comment, Mister Ruiz.
Please.
I should mention, uh, we, wha- what you said about right now, you can do pretty much whatever you want, just not build, just not, uh, have-
No, no area.
That's not the case and, uh, Mister Fernando, you, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are many limitations on the amount of concrete that you could put, uh, in your yard and also what you can build within the setbacks. In a setback, and correct me if I'm wrong, we, you can't build structures, any permanent structures in that setback. So you couldn't build things like, uh-
No, accessory, in other, uh, uh, in our, in our current, in other words, our current ordinance is, you can do pretty much anything in your backyard, so long as you don't live in it. So accessory structures, accessory structures can be two and a half feet from the, from the property, from the property line.
If there's no easements.
Yeah, well, yeah. In other words, everything, all the recommendations from the TRB were subject to easements. In other words, and the, the building department needs to see if there's any power lines in the back. So it becomes a, a building permit, you know, it becomes a building permit issue when somebody applies to, to add to their, to their backyard. So that's the whole, the whole deal. You can pretty much do anything you want in the backyard, so long as it's accessory in use and it's not for living, for living area. And when families wanna expand to their back, to their home, then they're forced to go vertical and the cost to go vertical in an existing structure is a lot more than adding another bedroom to the rear of the, of the property. And there's a bunch of examples where Board of Adjustments has made exceptions to the building, uh, to the building setbacks in, in the, in the rear, in the rear yard. So, um, it, it kind of, the council is kind of pushing more towards giving people a voice as to what they can do in their backyard, more than being told, you can do whatever you want, so long as it's accessory in use. So that's the whole, that's got, and, and coupled with the fact that, uh, people wanna protect their cars today and they can't because they're, they're forced to live at five feet or ten feet.
Mister Ruiz, um, actually, we already, uh, we went over the carport and, and we're, we're good with that.
We're good with that, right.
And what, what I think with the five feet, it's, uh, it's more on the developers, uh, not you personally. I'm talking about all the developers. I think that they wanna come in, they wanna build up to the, to the five feet setback and they're gonna create actually a hardship for, for whoever's gonna buy that, that house. Uh, it's different when, when you, you mentioned that, uh, that they wanna build, a homeowner wants to increase the living quarters. And we can, we can see that on a, on a one-to-one basis. I mean, if they wanna bring it up to us, there's already mechanisms in place where they can go to the Board of Adjustment.
Mister Chairman.
And, and they can be approved. But if we approve five feet for everything, then we're gonna see developers building houses of, all the way to the five feet, because I think that's what the developers want. I don't really think that it's more of the public, because we don't have any input from the public. At least we don't have anybody here, any, any, any people telling us whether they, they agree or they don't agree. So I still think that, uh, that we need to wait for that study, Mister Chairman.
I agree. I think, I think the comments that our planning director made, right, you are, are just in line with what we were looking for. And doing the studies, you know, to bring information back, engage in the public, you know, getting all the input so that we all make the right decisions. Certainly don't wanna make a decision that is gonna turn into a disaster in the future or vice versa. It may be a tremendous thing to do, you know, a change, but without a lot of input from a lot of different areas, it makes it real difficult for this commission to move forward, I think, with that. I think-
And I think, Mister Chairman, if I may, I think that at this particular time, we should table it. Not make a recommendation, but whether, we would have a recommendation. I think we should table it until we get the right information and the facts. Because staff is denying, actually, the city of Coria's staff, uh, they're saying this is not good. So I would, uh, I mean, we could be here all night, right? And, but-
Well, there, there is nothing to table, it's just a workshop. But I think you'd be permitted to create an action on it if you wanted. I don't think you have to. This was just a workshop to explore. It was something that y'all could discuss and ask questions.
Yes. Just one, one question, just to, to clarify, um, from the, from the last meeting, this is focusing on the carport. Um, I, I know there was, it, it seems everything's okay with the carport. I, I just recall, if I'm mistaken, I, I just wanna be corrected. But, um, I, I guess it was just a concern, I, I don't think there was, um, an actual, I don't recall an actual voting for it to move forward, but I think there was a concern.
No, there wasn't. So I mean-
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to-
Gotta come back to- We, the regular, we had a, uh, on our next PNC meeting.
Yeah, they can bring it back.
And, and we'll, you know, we're okay with that. In, in terms of the rest of it, I, I, I have to agree with our planning director that I think we need to go to the route that you're recommending right now. And do our due diligence. Well, I'd like to mention, uh, I'm sorry, but, uh, when it comes to the, our next meeting for the carport, of course we'd expect to hear what you have to say about that also, since, uh, you're going to run the study and, anyway.
Well, on that note, let me say two things. One, if, we'll, we'll never have all the information, but we'll give you as much information as we can put together and as much input as we can reasonably get to, to help you make an informed decision. Now, I'm not aware that we're preparing something for Carport specifically, but if there, right now, at this point, if there was anything on the table to recommend changes citywide, I would say our recommendation as staff would be, let's wait. The whole purpose of what we're going to, to do with the Viva Laredo Plan, the next step is taking that from a plan to actually changing the code. In, in that interim, we are going to be studying this out, we're gonna be providing information, we'll be getting input from the public. And so it would be premature to do anything right now, citywide, to change things without doing that announcement. Giving you the best information you can.
Yes, that's okay. That'll work.
I'm just trying, yeah, for, for my end, I'm in the middle. I'm just trying to see where, what, what-
You are familiar with the carport, uh, item, right?
I think I just-
You are?
I am, and I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to smaller setbacks, I'm not opposed to, for carports or for, I, I, I think that's good, that we wanna make, uh, or you see, we wanna give more options to our, to our residents. So let me put that on the record. I'm very supportive of that idea. It's just very important that we can do, we can take the, we take this process slowly and we study it out.
Okay. Hear that? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all of you, take it.
Aye.
Thank you.